Good evening and welcome to this, the May 9th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that Councilmember Warner and Vice Mayor Gary are not here tonight. It's been a long day. Yeah, Vice Mayor Gary is not here, but we've got a quorum, so that's all good. So tonight, we've got a special treat. We have Troop 942, the scout troop from St. Charlesboro, MA, will be doing the presentation of the colors and assisting us with the pledge of allegiance. We have John Molitoris is the leader of Troop 942, and John Molitoris is also the senior patrol leader. Presenting the colors will be Shloek Ban Sal and Matthew Larson, and also representing the troop tonight Camden Kernan, Takumi Romero, and Mauricio Murillo. So with that, I turn it over to the troop leader. Mr. Molitoris.
Hello, I'm John. I'm in the color guard ceremony. Troop, attention. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise. Color guard, prepare to post the colors. Color guard, post the colors. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, report. Color guard, it's me.
Troop 942, thank you very much. Getting us off to a great start here. So with that, we have proclamations and presentations. May 15th to May 21st has been proclaimed National Public Works Week, and we have a proclamation from the city of Livermore. I believe Darren Greenwood is here to accept it. So I'd just like to highlight the great work. These are the folks that really not a lot of people see, but they do a tremendous work behind the scenes. So the proclamation states, whereas public works services in the Livermore community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed community is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, landscaping, public buildings, solid waste and recyclables collection, and airport operations, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of Livermore residents depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the members of the Livermore Public Works Department, and whereas this year, the American Public Works Association declared the week of May 15th to 21st as National Public Works Week in recognition of the importance of the hard work and dedication of the public works personnel. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims the week of May 15th to the 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week and encourages residents to recognize the contributions the public works staff makes every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the whole public works staff, thank you for the proclamation. And actually, while I'm here, thanks to our public works staff for the excellent work they do in making me look good and the city manager and you all look good as well. Just an announcement for the public, to celebrate Public Works Week, on May 18th, we'll be having a public works showcase at the Maintenance Service Center. So from 9:00 to 11:30 in the morning, the public's welcome to come out. We'll have displays set up from all our different divisions, talking about what we do, showing off some of our fancy equipment, things like that. So I'd encourage people to drop by, again, May 18th, 9:00 to 11:30. And then after that, in the afternoon, we're going to have city employees come out and check out what we do as well, so council's welcome as well. Thank you very much.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Great work. So now, we have the Water Awareness Poster Contest, and this is the Water Awareness Month. So the Tri-Valley Water Agencies believe that it's important to maintain community awareness for the need for water conservation as a way of life, especially in our children, and are encouraging all the interested students to participate in this contest. The Water Awareness Poster Contest helps remind students about the importance of water, and of course, many of you know that that was the career that I spent many years in, many decades in water quality. It has been our experience that our children are very enthusiastic about the environment and not wasting our most precious natural resource, which is water, and it's great because a lot of the young folks out there constantly remind us that we need to be very vigilant about water usage. The City of Livermore Water Department has again sponsored the Water Awareness Poster Contest for 2016 for 3rd and 4th grade classes in Livermore. The theme for this year is "Saving Water, Rain or Shine," with an emphasis on water conservation. Winners of the contest will be given a certificate honoring the students' artwork, a T-shirt showing their artwork, and a gift card. The students and their classmates will also be treated to an ice cream party and have the opportunity to have their artwork entered into a contest to be featured on the American Waterworks Association, AWWA Drinking Water Week print advertisements. And I've been a member of the American Waterworks Association for, let's just say, decades. But GREAT is actually one of the largest professional organizations in the world, and they do tremendous work protecting the water quality, public health, and safety. So with that, I believe Dana D'Angelo is here to help with the presentation of the awards. And we've got the first place is, oh, let me start, 3rd place with a $25 gift card is Miriam Solomon in Mrs. Levitt's Altamont Creek 3rd grade class. 2nd place with a $50 gift card is Jace Watley from Mrs. Halim's class at Croce Elementary 3rd grade. And 1st place with a $100 gift card is Audrey Yang with Mrs. Kalustian from Altamont Creek 4th grade. And you know what? Let's all process down here and present the awards. Okay, so Miriam Solomon. Congratulations. Stay right here. Stay here.
Turn around, so we want to take your pictures. Go smile.
Okay, and stay here. I'll get everybody up here. We had Jace Watley. Jace Watley is not here. And on Jace Watley's behalf, we have. And 1st place, Audrey Yang. Audrey, come on in. Oof. I don't know. I already saw this one. Okay, right here. Right. There. And some of the cameras. Be fun. Come on in. Get closer. Come on in. Sorry. Congratulations. Very much. There you go. Well done.
Nice shot.
Oh, the fun stuff we get to do. Now, onto the business at hand. Okay, as we go into the consent calendar, these are items that are not on the agenda. The City Council can neither deliberate nor take action on these items, and I ask that folks keep their comments to three minutes or less. But before we open the consent calendar, or the Citizens Forum, next meeting on the 23rd, the next official meeting, next meeting is the 16th, is a budget workshop, I believe. But the regular meeting is going to be May 23rd, and we expect a crowd, so we're going to have it at the Shrine Center instead. It will not be televised live because they don't have the facilities to do that, but just so everybody knows, May 23rd, we will be at the Shrine Center. And so that's 170 Lindberg Avenue here in Livermore. So check the TV30 website for the replay information. But just so everybody knows, if you don't show up here on the 23rd, we're going to be at the Shrine Center. Okay? Very good. So with that, moving on to the Citizens Forum, we have Don Meeker, Rochelle Snedeker, and Liz Roberts with Livermore Downtown, Inc., and Anthony Rangel.
Well, good evening, Council, Mayor and staff. After many encores, this is it. I leave Sunday. Don Meeker, 6544 44th Avenue East, Tacoma, Washington. Tonight, I'm going to speak about the city logo. The one actually, a resolution was passed, May 7th, 1956, Resolution 5516, that named this figure as the city logo. 60 years, almost 60 years to the date. That's a wrap.
Thank you very much, Don. Wish you all the best up in Washington, and thank you for your service as a city historian. You've been a great asset and a great part of the program here at the City Council. Thank you. Rochelle Snedeker and Liz Roberts.
Good evening. I am Liz Roberts, Livermore Downtown Board of Directors, President. Nice to see you all. We'd like to take a few minutes to formally thank you and the city staff for your support and assistance in producing our 25th Annual Livermore Wine Country Downtown Street Fest. It was a great success, and we have received wonderful reports from our restaurants and retailers about their increased sales, along with new customers and exposure that will continue their growth for months to come. We had lots of questions and interest from our locals and our visitors regarding upcoming developments. The downtown housing component is way overdue, and our workforce, both in the downtown and throughout the city, are anxiously waiting the opportunity to not only serve us as their customers, but to be our neighbors too.
Rochelle Snedeker, I'm the Executive Director for Livermore Downtown. 22 South L Street for now. In two weeks, we'll be at 154 South J Street. We just keep moving around where you need us. The new parking garage is, of course, another huge topic of conversation, and we thank you for your continued commitment to making sure that parking is addressed first and foremost in the downtown plan. A boutique hotel will be the cake topper, and when we add all three, garage, walkable community housing and hotel, and might I add, very emphatically, that the market can support, we know that the investment by those restaurants, retailers, and services that we still lack in downtown will be lining up to join the neighborhood. 24-hour, seven-day-a-week consumer base is what the new residents will bring to our downtown. Our businesses will be better sustained and grow, and we will attract more desired businesses to the neighborhood. All Livermore residents throughout the community win with this new housing component to keep our talented workforce in place. Thank you for continuing the brilliance in downtown Livermore.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping up the great work on the downtown. It was a great success this weekend. Anthony Rangel, Lynn Sepala, and Bill Boomerod.
Good evening, good evening, Council.
Whatever it is.
Good evening, staff. Like yourself, it's been a long day for me as well, Mayor. I just would like to first start off and thank you guys for last City Council meeting, beginning the intelligent conversation about the possibility of medicinal access coming to Livermore. I listened very closely to what you guys were concerned about, especially in regard to the testing regimens to be set forth by the state of California. On Friday, I met with the Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulations, the Department of Consumer Affairs, and the Department of Public Health, as well as the Department of Fish and Game, to express what was expressed to me in the need for state standardized testing coming out with the new MRSA regulations. On top of that, I also, because of my work as a holistic caregiver, I also expressed the need for standardizing the testing far past the quantification of the potency of the products, the microbiological testing, the RSA pesticides, also urging them to incorporate the proven science, that is, terpene therapies that do not produce any kind of a psychoactivity but are extraordinary for treating stress vulnerability disorders like PTSD, depression, manic depression, many different things. We were received very well up in the state Capitol, and that was a good leg off. As I had mentioned to you, Mayor, last time we were in front of each other, I am leaving for a couple of days for Washington, DC. I will be spending the next week speaking with members of the United States Congress and Senate regarding the direction of the medical marijuana regulations nationwide, including the banking regulations and access, and really, everything that entails access for the veterans, including the VA Access Bill that's due before the Assembly. I believe it just finally passed the Senate again, so we're hoping this time we can secure the future of our veterans as bright. I also brought with me examples of some of the most strict testing regimens currently available in the state of California out of the city of Berkeley. I believe if we are going to move towards regulations, we should not be lax, especially with something as dramatic as public health involved with getting contaminated products or products with chemicals that could potentially harm somebody in a very, very serious manner. So I brought copies for you all to read so you can familiarize yourself with the local ordinances from that area, as well as a, I'm including a clinical piece that I wrote that was just recently published on the use of endocannabinoid therapies coupled with mind-body medicine in the treatment of PTSD.
Give those to the city clerk.
And thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. When you go back to DC, make sure they address the placement on Schedule 1, because that's going to, that'll be a game changer.
I believe I'm meeting small on Thursday to rally support as well.
Very good, thank you. Lynn Sepala, Bill Boomerod, and Dave Wetmore.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm Lynn Sepala, President of the Livermore Cultural Arts Council, 29 organizations strong. First of all, the LCAC is proud to announce a vote to support the Measure J Bond Initiative. Measure J will ensure that the Livermore School District will be able to fulfill its goal in preparing students to thrive in the rapidly changing 21st century environment. Second, the LCAC will be celebrating its 50th anniversary in October. Through efforts of countless people in LCAC, the city is now envied for its thriving art scene, opera, symphonies, chamber and choral music, musical and spoken theater, dance, visual arts, and cultural and historical groups, and yes, a beautiful bankhead theater. But it wasn't always this way. Let's journey back in time 50 years ago and see what forces were in play as LCAC emerged. It was a very young city then, with median age of 26 versus 40 now today. Councilperson were elected as young as 30 years old. Jim Crockett, a bookstore owner, wrote pieces in The Independent, April 17th and April 24th. The lead sentence got the intentions of readers. He wrote, quote, "We have heard it said that Livermore is a cultural wasteland, that there is nothing to do here. Is this a valid criticism?" Unquote. Young lab workers and their spouses had organized cultural activities as the population grew from 4,500 in 1952 to perhaps about 25,000 in 1966. There were art associations, a symphony, and classical music group, several theater groups, a writer club, and hobby groups. But for all of the choices, Crockett notes example after example of low attendance. Groups came and went as problems in getting audience, and decent venues plagued them. In his second article, he proposed solutions, quote, "The public must be encouraged to take a more active role in the city's cultural life. This can be best accomplished by education, coordination of activities, and by providing facilities conducive to comfortable viewing, listening, and performing. The most pressing need, however, at this moment is the formation of a local arts commission." End quote. Next month, we will look at how the city, the Parks District, and citizens delved into the politics and economics of creating an arts commission, the Livermore Cultural Arts Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And we had May School as the theater, and unfortunately, that brought down.
Cass and Mass is coming back, yes.
Yeah, they're back, because the encore players, they're coming back for an encore. Bill Boomerod, Dave Wetmore, and Kathleen Minzer. Ready for baseball, huh? Awesome. Tell me about it.
We'll try to do this within the three minutes. Mr. Mayor, it's staff, it's nice to be here tonight. My name is Dave Wetmore. I'm the Director of the Little League Intermediate World Series. July the 29th, we have 11 teams that are going to be converging on our city. What we haven't done in front of this format before is to do the World Series draw, and we want to do that this evening for you. The first team that we're going to do out of the international bracket is a team from Canada. Canada's the first team. Second team out of the hat, Puerto Rico. Third team will be the team from the Latin America region. The fourth team, they travel the furthest. Last year, they're from the Czech Republic, the team from the region of Europe-Africa. And the last team on the international bracket is Asia-Pacific.
All right.
Just to let you know, in 2017, our international field will expand to six teams. So we're negotiating right now on where that team's going to come from. On the United States bracket, so that I'm not accused of looking in the bag, the first team is a team out of the East, the East Region. Games played in New York. Second team out, out of the Southeast, games are played in Florida. Third game out, third team out, is your host team from California District 57. Fourth team out, it's a team from the Southwest. They've been from Texas the last three years. Fifth team, the team out of the West. Last year, they were from Laredo, Texas, which is considered the West Region. And then the last team is out of the Central Region. So if I remember this correctly, on Sunday, the 31st, Canada will play Puerto Rico at 9:00 noon. Latin America against Europe-Africa, Asia-Pacific gets a bye. At 3:00, the East plays the Southeast. And the 6:00 night game on Sunday, 31st, will be your host team from District 57 against the Southwest, with the West and the Central Teams getting a bye. And we did that with 20 seconds to go. We feel really good about that.
So Mr. Wetmore, when is the, when are we playing some baseball here? When is the Little League World Series coming back to Livermore?
Teams fly in on the 29th. They come, as you can see, from all over the world. Our opening ceremonies will be on Saturday, the 30th, and on--
Of July, right?
Of July.
30th of July.
Sunday, July 31st, everything starts. The really huge thing this year is that in the past, our championship game was ESPN2 on that Saturday night. We've been moved to the Sunday night Major League Baseball slot, August 7th. They've moved us from a 5:00 time slot to 5:30 Pacific time, so you are primetime Livermore to back east. So Sunday, August 7th, 5:30 Pacific time, on ESPN. Saturday, the 6th, is when we have the USA Championship and the International Championship at 1:00 and at 5:00. In that morning, we have our Challenger Exhibition Game, which is, Challenger is the division for children with special needs, and we have a team coming to us from Covina and a team coming to us from Visalia. So those families will all be coming in, and that's, if you haven't seen Challenger before, it's a gem within the Little League Baseball structure for kids with special needs, and we know that those families will be welcomed to Livermore as the other 200 guests that we have coming in.
That's terrific. That's great.
It's coming up fast.
Looking forward to it. July 31st to August 7th, we'll be on ESPN, primetime, and I'm working with the U.S. Conference of Mayors on this. It's part of the whole Play Ball program with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and that was launched in January by none other than Cal Ripken Jr.
It was very nice from the Council last year. I took back to Williamsport, Pennsylvania, the Little League Headquarters, the proclamation that you had, and I can tell you that the Commissioner of Major League Baseball is a huge Little League fan, and Mr. Manfred was there, and the President/CEO of Little League Baseball, Steve Keener, had that right to show him that it came from Livermore. And of course, we have that banner in the outfield, which is real nice to be able to put up for the event also.
Well, it's great. Well, I look forward to him coming back and look forward to working with you on this. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun, and it's just, it's great for the community, and it's great for the whole region. So thank you for all of your tremendous efforts, and Bill, I'll see you behind the grill there, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. And to a great committee. All Livermore residents, they've been involved with so many different activities in your town, so we really do. Thank you.
All your tremendous work on that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the extra time.
Fun stuff. So, moving on to the consent calendar, these are fairly routine items that are typically passed on a single motion. Does anyone wish to pull any of the consent items for discussion? Do you have a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Councilmember Turner, seconded by Councilmember Spadovski. Any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Hi.
Passed unanimously. Moving on to 5.01, this is a public hearing determining rates requested by Livermore Sanitation with the approved rate methodology. So you have Judy Erlison, the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the City Council. In January 2016, Livermore Sanitation, LSI, submitted a rate adjustment application indicating that an overall 1.99% baseline cost increase was warranted beginning July 1st, 2016. LSI is responsible for proposing rates. The City Council is responsible for determining that the rate adjustment is consistent with the methodology identified in the franchise agreement. LSI recommends focusing this year's increase on the smaller-sized residential garbage carts. If approved, rates for subscribers to the 20- and 32-gallon size carts will increase $1.85 per month. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the upcoming Rate Your Seven rates effective July 1st, 2016. Thank you for your consideration, and staff is available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Nope, okay. With that case, I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards, so with that, I will close the public hearing. Comments or questions for staff?
Yeah.
Followed by a motion.
Just a question. I know that we're not allowed to set the rates, we just approve the rates, but it seems like, and I realize that we've been trying to make things more level, but it seems like we are once again hitting the people that recycle, and exponentially more than everybody else, and that doesn't sit well, primarily with me. I don't know how my fellow councilmembers work, and so I was just curious if it was possible, instead of doing a flat fee for those two can sizes, if we could do a flat fee for all four can sizes, or ideally, a percentage for all four that would equal the same amount of cost revenue, because they need to cover their expenses, but so that we're sharing the wealth amongst everybody instead of just the folks that have the smaller cans. So I don't know what's possible from, with our contract and everything, but I just think that that would be more fair.
Are you saying have the same price for all four cans?
No, the same. No, the same increase. So, instead of saying that the small can and the next size up get the same amount of increase, that either all four cans get the same flat rate increase, so that we're increasing everybody, not just the people that have small cans, or I would prefer a percentage of increase on everybody.
The original intent, when we first set out on this a couple, actually several years ago, was the idea is that the small cans are being subsidized.
Exactly.
And that the idea was to, at least the council direction at that time, was to more closely equalize the actual cost of service.
Exactly. But we're continuing for the last couple rate settings. We have increased for the smaller cans substantially more.
Which is reducing the subsidy.
Exactly. Which is, is a good idea, but I think it's probably time to stop and to start having everybody share the increases. That would be my preference. But I'll go with either, you know, with whatever council direction is. I just think that it's, we continue to raise the rates in a larger percentage for the folks. And I understand why, because of the, because they're subsidizing and we're not paying for recycling and all these other things. I totally understand it, but, and there's not very many users in the larger cans. I just think that, that they shouldn't have a flat fee structure on an ongoing basis when they have the large cans. I think we should be raising their rates as well. If we're going to raise everybody, you know, the people that are-
Because they're already paying significantly more.
Because they don't recycle.
Well, they do recycle, but they just make more garbage than anybody else.
Exactly. So I think, you know, that, you know, I personally think that they should have an increase at some point, because they haven't been.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Jason Long, Call your city attorney. Right now, the way the rates are structured is through the franchise agreement we have with Livermore Sanitation, Inc., and that's where the methodology is set. If there's a desire to revisit that methodology, the appropriate time would be when we actually renegotiate the agreement. Right now, the role is to determine whether the applicant, that being Livermore Sanitation, has requested a rate increase that's consistent with the methodology in the agreement. If it is, they're entitled to receive that. If they're not, they're not entitled to receive that.
So, within the agreement, it says it's okay to raise rate for some and not all others?
Yes.
And we can't change that?
Correct. That discretion is left to them.
And it's in the methodology that was, and that's, that's a very complicated, because they take into account the value of the recycling, the cost and the value, and the, I think that, last number I heard was it's like $11 a container to, or $11 a yard to dump into the landfill, but it's $90 to compost. Somewhere, remember, 90% statistics are made up on the spot 50% of the time.
There we go. And I think we just did that. But more to the point is, if the council wishes to actually have a rate-setting role, you would then need to submit each of your decisions to a Prop. 218 ballot, where everyone in the city would have to vote on each of those. So you or your predecessors very explicitly gave up that right to set those rates, because they did not wish to go to an election every time we adjusted rates. And so for that reason, as long as the contractor is not collecting more money than they're allowed to on the contract, they are allowed to divide that up any way they wish. And that-
Well, then, I would just like a message to go to them that at some point, we should look at the methodology behind which we are setting these rates, because it's been a long time since we've increased rates for the people that are using the service the most.
Fair enough.
And the council direction previously was that we did work to remove that subsidy. Okay. All right. So, to revisit it in the future, future date? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of item 5.01.
Moved by Councilmember Spadovski. Do you have a second?
I don't really want to. I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Turner, under a mild protest.
Well, I don't want to see the look on their faces if we don't vote on this tonight.
With that, any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Ms. Aronson, thank you very much.
Under duress.
Okay. Matters for consideration. Discussion and direction regarding the findings of the homeless survey report. We have Jean Prazier and Eric Uranga to present.
The impetus for this conductive survey came from Mayor Marchand's Summit on Homelessness-
You're on.
I'm sorry. The impetus to conduct this survey came from Mayor Marchand's Summit on Homelessness that was held in April 2014. Over 200 people attended the event, and that included members of the faith community, nonprofit agencies, local residents, and a few homeless. Several conclusions came out of that, out of that event, but everyone agreed that we need to find, get a handle on how many people were actually living on Livermore streets, how they got there, and how many were keeping there. Therefore, we undertook a survey to begin to understand the complex and interrelated issues that cause homelessness. To implement the survey, the city hired the consulting firm of Hatchell, Tabernacle, and Associates to help us out. To provide local input, we also instituted an 11-member planning committee. Both councilperson Turner and councilperson Werner represented the City Council on the committee. We had staff of the Police Department and Community and Economic Development Departments, three nonprofits, two representatives from the faith community, the Livermore School District, and staff of the Alameda County Homeless Continuum of Care. The committee met through, throughout July and September to determine, to complete specific tasks. They determined the type of information to gather, and the committee specifically chose to gather information regarding the unsheltered persons who were in Livermore. And we chose that because that is the population we really truly know the least about. They developed the questions and provided feedback to the consultants regarding the survey's questions, and they discussed and chose the various locations to implement the survey throughout the city. They also helped recruit volunteers and provided input regarding the volunteers' training. Based on the information gathered from the nonprofits that were on the committee, the committee learned that different groups of homeless gather at different sites throughout various times throughout the week and the month. So they were very deliberate about the sites that they chose. Open Heart Kitchen, we, the sites they chose were at North Livermore, when the Hope Band was there, and at Asbury Methodist Church, when the showers and clean clothes were available. And the Police Department provided information regarding where the largest encampments were located. We recruited volunteers through the city's social media and partner and distribution list. All the volunteers were required to attend an in-person or online training where they learned how to develop the survey instrument. And both trainings were developed by our consultant, input from the Police Department about safety issues. I'd like to take a moment at this time to thank all of the volunteers, the 54 volunteers who gave generously of their time to attend the trainings and as well as come out and help us implement the survey. But I want to give an extra thank you to those who surveyed on the encampment day, because that day, we started at 3:00 AM in the morning, and they all showed up, and they were on time, and did an absolutely incredible job. So, during the training, volunteers were instructed to implement the survey to everybody in identical fashion. Everyone at each of the sites was asked if they would be interested in taking the survey. If they said yes, the person were asked three questions to determine if they were homeless. If the person was homeless, they completed the survey. The survey had 26 questions, covering a variety of topics that we can see that are on the screen. And the committee, when they were developing the questions, carefully chose the questions to balance the length of the questionnaire with the need for information. They wanted to make sure that people wanted to stay to the end to complete the survey. But please note that all answers that were given on the survey were self-reported. The findings of the research. There were 129 surveys were completed. This is from 117 chronically homeless persons and additional 12 families that were contacted through the school district counselors. Although we did not capture all of the people that were homeless in Livermore, we estimated that we did not find all of the unsheltered, and we also did not include in the survey people from the homeless shelters, uncounted people from, that were veterans, and those residing with temporary, temporarily with family or friends. But still, it is important to note that the number of persons in homeless, that the survey found, still exceeded Alameda County's homeless count by over 40 persons. The demographics are pretty straightforward. Two-thirds are men and one-third women. Majority are middle-aged. Majority of men live alone. The women, the majority of the women have children, and only two of the 12 that identified themselves as veterans are currently obtaining services. We learned many facts regarding the persons who are homeless in Livermore. The survey found that a large percent of the persons were homeless less than two years, and that's true whether the person was single or part of a family. There are, though, differences between singles and families that are living on the streets. As you can see, the singles, what is most frequently mentioned among single persons is that they are struggling with loss of income, along with mental health and substance abuse. Where with the families, they're mostly, they have to do with relationship issues, marital issues, and along with increasing housing costs. And although the previous slides have shown that many of our homeless have been experiencing this for only a short time in their lives, it's important to note, for a majority of our homeless, they have had more than one episode of homelessness. In fact, 24 of the, of the persons in this, that were on the survey, had been homeless four or more times in their life. The report cites studies that show that homeless persons will either stay in the community that they become homeless, or they will return to a place where they've had a connection. These connections help them overcome social isolation, that is often a condition of homelessness. This chart shows that 54 of the residents of the city have been homeless, have resided in the city for over a decade, and additional 17 persons have lived here between six and 10 years. This, okay. This slide shows that 66 of the persons surveyed were residents of Livermore became, before they became homeless. In addition, seven came from the Tri-Valley. It's the environment, the social and family bonds that helps homeless persons navigate their environment, strengthen their connections to a place or a city. As you can note in this slide, many of the homeless persons are connected to our community because they have family here or they grew up here. The largest, other largest category in this slide is "other," and that we allowed our homeless persons to say, if they said "other" to define what this actually meant. And what they said was that they previously attended school here, their family used to live here, or they feel connected to a specific religious community in Livermore. Health issues are an incredibly important issue when it comes to homeless. Although these are self-reported, these are also contributing factors to why someone either becomes homeless or remains homeless. And it's significant to our community, because if you'll notice, these issues contribute to emergency room and hospitalization rates that increase the cost of public services. What have we learned from this survey? Almost half the people, homeless persons in Livermore are homeless for the first time. Another group consists of people who've been homeless multiple times throughout the years. Most of them have lived, many of them have lived here for over a decade, and their high percentage of homeless in Livermore are single men. But this also includes childrens, families, veterans, and the elderly. And although reasons for homelessness is different between singles and families, the most frequently cited causes tend to be health, mental health, alcohol and drug abuse, and relationship issues. So what are our next steps? Staff's recommending that we return to the council in June with following information. We'll give you a summary, summary of existing programs that we have that are currently serving homeless persons in our community. We'll identify initial populations that we can serve that include families, children, veterans, chronically ill and mentally ill. And we will develop options to tailor and expand existing programs to identify populations, along with identifying the resources that are needed to create and expand programs. And we'll look at a variety of sources, state, federal, and other outside of local sources. Staff is available for questions, and we're seeking direction from the council of how to move forward with this survey.
Very good. Thank you. As a member of the subcommittee, Councilmember Turner, do you have comments?
No, other than what I've already said and that Ms. Prazier brought up, is that we need to be very mindful that we were not able to count everybody. So, the numbers are lower than what is truly on the street, and, which is alarming. However, what we were able to do very well, and I'm very excited about, is to identify the demographics of those folks, and identify the ones that do and don't get services, and why they are here in Livermore and all of that. So I think that we have collected the data so we can, and the whole intent in my mind was that we would understand the problem a little bit better, and I think we do now. And, you know, other than what staff is already planning as far as coming back, obviously with the budget process, you're planning to come to June after the budget, but I'm assuming you're hoping to throw some stuff in the budget that might address some of this. I'm just guessing. And certainly want to know what kind of ideas, we've talked a little bit about a couple things, but not much, you know, what kind of ideas people have as to how we can tackle. And I like going segment by segment, because we can't. And that's the nice thing about this survey now. Now we have some key segments that we can look at and attack those small segments, instead of trying to address the entire issue at once. And so I'm very pleased about that ability to be able to look into that. Because we also had roughly how many in shelters the days of that? We had over 50, right?
There were close to 100 people in shelters during the time that we were implementing this survey.
Yeah. So we have, at minimum, over, well over 200 folks affected in the city of Livermore. And so, being able to, so I don't really have a ton of direction, other than, yeah, let's, you know, and certainly, we're going to meet soon, I'm assuming, and as a committee to continue on with next steps as well. But I'm just excited that we finally have a little bit of a feel for what the individual issues are, and how many people were unaware of services that already exist, so that we can utilize what we already have, because we already have a lot of really good stuff and a lot of excellent services. But then also look at the gaps, and that's where we really need to do the work, is look at what gaps do we have and what's reasonable with our finances. Obviously, getting 100% of them into housing would be fantastic. Not necessarily realistic, and not 100% of the people on the street want housing. But being able to come up with some strategies for housing would be fantastic. And leveraging access in all the other people, with the mental health piece, maybe even the Horizons, and looking at what we can do in Horizons for those families, and looking at the mental health piece through there, would be probably a good plan. I'm speaking to the choir, so I don't know that I have much to add. It was a very interesting prospect. There was a couple problems with the survey after the fact that I didn't catch beforehand, whereas there's a question on the survey that says, "Do you live with anybody else?" Meaning, while homeless, is there anybody else? And of the people that it said yes, we didn't have a follow-up question to, "How many others?" So that we could have a more accurate count. Or, did they also get surveyed? So, you know, would have been nice, but I think that we, we served the intent of what the survey was.
Were they living with someone homeless each, together on the street? Or were they living with someone just couch surfing?
Yeah. I think the first three screening questions screens out the couch surfers.
But no, they were, they were also included. They didn't have-
The couch surfers were not included in the survey.
Thought I saw something where they were staying with friends.
No, we did, we did not, we did not have them staying with friends. This was, we were focusing on the unsheltered homeless, so-
So if they're with a friend, they're with a friend under the bridge, or in an encampment, or something like that. If they're with somebody else or in a car, I think we still included the families in cars, but not the couch surfers.
Okay. And I do have a speaker card. Don Meeker?
Don Meeker, 6544, 44th Avenue East, Tacoma, Washington. There's one word that comes to mind when I saw this survey, and that word is "respect." You showed a great deal of respect to those who are less fortunate and on the streets. I see this to be a very comprehensive survey of what their issues are. And I've been living in my driveway in my van for the last two weeks, because I'm selling my house, so I can't pretend to be homeless. However, if I didn't have a place to dump my tanks, where would I go? However, if I didn't have a place to dump my tanks, where would I go? If I didn't have a place to plug in, where would I go? If I didn't have my own indoor shower, where would I go? If I didn't have a refrigerator to keep my food, where would I keep my food? So even though I'm not homeless, I can clearly guess at what some of the issues are for those who are living on the street. And it, in its very nature, cannot be really healthy. I'm living in a van with my dog and a sleeping bag, and I try to keep the place aired out. But I'm sure if a stranger came along, it might smell a little bit like a man cave. But these, you know, these are all health issues, and if you're doing it for a long period of time, it's going to lead to some issues. And I really applaud the council for taking this step and showing respect for those who are less fortunate than us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meeker. I found it. Page nine, percentage of respondents where they usually sleep, creek bed, streets, sidewalk, friend's house, couch surfing.
Page nine of the survey?
Yes. Page nine, fifteen percent. Car, van, or RV. So are we deleting that fifteen percent from the total number? That was unclear.
No. Friend's house.
So that's included?
That's included.
Okay, so the couch surfing, couch surfers are included. So that's when I said, if the question was, "Are you living with someone?", they could either be living with someone on the streets, because a lot of times that's where we run into problems in trying to find them housing, is they don't want to separate from their partner, because they're on the streets. Or are they living with someone couch surfing? So that's just, that was something that wasn't entirely clear, but that's just solid information for later, I'm sure. Just a couple of clarifications. In the report, a couple of times it said that the, it was the mayor's summit on homelessness in Livermore. Actually, it was the mayor's summit on regional homelessness, because I recognize that this is a regional issue. That's why I invited the cities of Pleasanton, Dublin, San Ramon, and Danville, because it is the entire Tri-Valley, because there are homeless individuals throughout the Tri-Valley. And it is a regional problem, and not just simply this city. Also, I thought it was on page 161 of the packet, page 12 of the report, said it's important to note that information from Alameda County's Homeless Management Information System states that all cities in Alameda County provide services to homeless persons. And I wasn't aware of any other shelters that were available in any of the other cities in the Tri-Valley. So I was just wondering what services some of the other cities provide for the homeless in the other cities in the Tri-Valley region.
Sure. Ms. Prazier might be able to be more specific on some of the services, but they include food programs, and mental health services, and healthcare services.
So like through Access Healthcare?
Access, yeah, and as well as some free meal programs.
Yeah, and like Open Heart Kitchen, I know, serves one day at the senior center in Pleasanton.
And Access has its main facility, both mental health and other types of health services in Pleasanton.
Okay, okay, because I know that there were no other shelters. Of all the shelters in the Tri-Valley, all of them are in Livermore, for the homeless, for the disadvantaged, for the abused, because we.
You're correct. There are three shelters in the Tri-Valley, and all three are in Livermore.
And then we also have the rotating shelters during the wintertime, when it's below forty degrees and raining.
That's correct.
That's through the churches, the faith-based community. Okay. Kostas Spodrowsky?
First, I'd like to thank staff for all the work, and also my fellow council members for serving on the committees, and the mayor for leading this effort. It's a lot of great work. I think the one kind of theme that I got reading the survey is that we're really putting the person before their status at this point, because often when people talk about homelessness, it's assumed that the person is a drug and alcohol abuser and a panhandler, you know, when you hear the word homeless. And this really is starting to put more of a face to people who are unfortunately homeless. And there are a few things that really stood out for me, one of which was the seventy-five percent incarceration rate of the respondents, which the, you know, with my background in corrections, at least through college, I really do feel that we need to work with the correction system to help people when they're identified as homeless entering the system, and possibly with some of the hospitals, that we're not just turfing these people from one agency to another, that they're not bouncing from ERs to jails, back to the streets, and this never-ending cycle. Hopefully, we'll start to get that message out, and maybe coordinate, you know, I know we are coordinating with healthcare organizations and law enforcement, but the survey really does show that, and I'm wondering what that. Did you ask a question about the recidivism rate, if they'd been incarcerated more than once, or it was just at any one point, I can't remember?
No, we did not ask about the recidivism rate.
Okay, so that would be interesting to see how often they're in and out. But, you know, leading back to the stereotype, you know, seeing the high percentage of people who lost their job or divorce, you know, that half, they consider themselves that was the main reason, that's dispelling the, you know, the drug and alcohol myth. And also, you know, I was, it was really interesting to see the one question, the top five community services not currently used but would like to access in the future. And here goes another myth. Seventy-five percent of the respondents either asked motel voucher, housing assistance, or some type of shelter. And when you talk to people about homelessness, oh, they're out there because they choose to be out there. They're not working, they can get their lives together and get a house. It's not that easy. And I think the survey really does, you know, prove that stereotype wrong as well. So really great work. I completely agree with the direction moving forward. Hopefully, this can help secure grant funding, you know, and not every community will go to this length to survey their homeless and to really, you know, identify some of the nuances and some of the things that we can take care of. So hopefully, we can use that for additional funding and provide more services. And as I've, you know, heard in presentations and research, you know, prior to this, the solution is housing with services. As staff has explained to us before, that seems to be really, you know, the way to go in terms of getting people into permanent situations, not just sticking them in a motel and saying, "Here you go, now your life is complete." There are so many underlying issues that we need to address to make it a successful transition. So I think this is a huge step in that direction, and I thank everybody, in particular the people that went out at three in the morning, you know, and thank you very much.
Again, great work on this, and thanks to the volunteers that made this thing happen. A lot of really good information in this, and I think it underscores the fact that this really is complicated, that a third of the, around a third of the folks that are homeless in Livermore grew up here. But I found what was easy, what was even more compelling is that over forty percent have family here, and the fact that they're not living with family underscores how complex this issue is. Because obviously, there are other underlying issues that really are beyond the scope of what the city can provide, because we have no revenue stream of our own to provide services to the homeless. We do a tremendous job leveraging CDVG grant funding, Community Development Block grants, but those are declining. We're not getting as much of that. Also, what's interesting is, and I've been back to DC, working on this on a number of occasions, but there's twelve veterans, only one of them has veterans insurance through the VA. So there are a lot of services out here. How do we get people connected to the services that are already available? According to USIC, the U.S. Interagency Commission on Homelessness, they average, they worked out that it was about $120,000 per homeless person as they cycle through the justice system, the hospitalization system. We saw how many of them had been hospitalized on more than one occasion. Emergency rooms, that's where they go for treatment. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and yet if you can provide sustainable housing for them, USIC calculates about $20,000. So if we can somehow leverage funds from the county, that they can save $100,000 per individual by setting up some mechanism for sustainable services, because as the city manager pointed out, you know, Prop 218 somewhat limits us as far as what we can, we can't just create a revenue source to provide for whatever we want. So we're already constrained, but how do we align people with resources that are already available? And I think that's going to be something that's going to be key. And so I think that it is complicated. We've got some really good information here, and I look forward to you folks coming back in June with additional information and more steps on how we. There's so many different organizations that are trying to do something, perhaps we can coordinate some of those efforts to better access or better provide those services. I know that Access Healthcare is expanding, that's going to be very beneficial. They're adding, what, twenty-five exam rooms in Pleasanton, and I think nine mental health rooms as well. So this is going to be a tremendous opportunity to provide more services. So look forward to more information. Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to 6.02, the presentation for Alameda County Community Choice Aggregation Ms. Erlinson is back.
So item 6.02 is a presentation on the Alameda County Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program. So with that, I'd like to introduce Bruce Jensen of the Alameda County Planning Department, who will be giving the presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Bruce Jensen, Senior Planner with the Alameda County Planning Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight. We're excited about the creation of a Community Choice Energy Program in Alameda County, and we hope the city of Livermore will consider joining us to make the program a success. We've built a rigorous community process with a steering committee that includes representation from all eligible cities in the county, along with stakeholders from environmental and social justice organizations, labor, regional government, and more. Our thanks go to Mayor Marchand and Councilmember Spodrowsky for their participation on our steering committee and interest in our process. We also have a feasibility study underway to assess CCA viability. We expect completion of this study by next month. Our analyst presented his preliminary results last week at our steering committee meeting. And from what we've seen so far, they suggest a positive outcome from an Alameda County CCA program. Now, multi-jurisdictional CCAs are commonly operated by Joint Powers Agencies, or JPAs, and our work in creating a JPA is well underway. A draft JPA agreement is being reviewed by city attorneys in coordination with our county council. The object is to help the city attorneys become comfortable with the terms and language for eventual inclusion of their jurisdictions into the JPA. This month, we're visiting each city represented on the steering committee with a brief introduction into CCA, plus an update on the work to date. This presentation is intended to cover general CCA concepts, answer your questions about the process, and help prepare your city council and your city manager to take the necessary steps to join the JPA in the fall of 2016, if you so choose. So with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Seth Bruch of the firm Carbonomics. Mr. Bruch and his associates have been tremendously helpful in helping us organize and take our CCA through the process, and he'll provide you with some details of how Community Choice Aggregation works.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you here this evening. I know that you've seen this many times, so I'm going to try and run through these slides as efficiently as possible and to give plenty of time for Q and A. So just to launch right into it, oops, there we go. So in a nutshell, what are we talking about when we talk about Community Choice Energy? Community Choice Energy, or CCE, is a relatively new energy model that is available in the state of California, as well as seven other states. And what this model allows local jurisdictions to do, both county and city governments, is to pool together or aggregate all the homes and businesses within their jurisdiction into one entity, one program, that essentially takes over the energy supply and generation function from the utility, in our case, PG&E. That electricity, which is procured by the Community Choice Program, is delivered over the transmission distribution lines of PG&E right to your home. So just as it is now, the electricity goes to your, into your home. When the power goes out, you call PG&E. When you smell a gas leak, you call PG&E. So the Community Choice Program only takes over the electricity generation and supply There are literally communities up and down the state of California, from Humboldt down to San Diego, you'll see that on the next slide, which I'll go through quickly, but there are dozens and dozens of counties that are looking at this, and you can see here the reasons why. Because, oh, there we go. So the CCE programs basically give local jurisdictions the ability to control from where their electricity is sourced, thus enabling them to obtain electricity that is higher in renewable energy content, and therefore lower in greenhouse gas content that is currently available. And it offers customers a choice, where today, currently, there is no choice. PG&E is the only energy supply option that customers have. These programs are, with the exception of a little bit of the money that Alameda County's putting in, completely revenue-supported and ratepayer-supported, not taxpayer-subsidized. And we have seen, and you'll see this in the next slide, that for the most part, the electricity rates have been lower and more competitive than what's available currently from PG&E. So here are some of the reasons why so many communities are looking at CCE. And as I mentioned, over here, you've got the state of California with all of the counties and cities that are in the process of exploring Community Choice Programs. Those are the blue dots. There are three, actually now four, operational Community Choice Programs. Marin Clean Energy, or MCE, was the first one. We've now got Lancaster Choice Energy and Sonoma Clean Power. And this year, actually just a week ago, San Francisco's program launched, and San Mateo's program will launch later in the fall. I've covered this slide pretty well. So you can see, again, every Bay Area county is either, has a CCE program or is in the process of creating one. And here we are in Alameda. So in 2014, about two years ago, the Board of Supervisors allocated over a million dollars to help the process of exploring and setting up a Community Choice Program in Alameda. That process started with a technical, well, the technical study has been completed, but that technical study started with the collection of load data that was, that all cities authorized the county to collect on their behalf. That load data formed the basis for assessing how big the program would be and other aspects of the technical study, which I'll get into. We have a steering committee, which you are a proud member of, and that meets monthly. And we have now, again, the technical study completed, that was done by MRW and Associates in Oakland. I'm not going to go through these goals, but essentially, you can see there, these are the goals that were blessed by the steering committee, basically trying to get electricity for Alameda County that is, again, higher renewable energy content, cleaner energy that is as much as possible procured locally, thus creating local job opportunities, and most importantly, the creation of a program with rates that are competitive with PG&E. Oops, there we go. Okay, so as I mentioned, we have three programs now, well, four with San Francisco, but the two key points I wanted to hit in this slide are that the rate savings and the renewable energy content. So in 2015, all three of the programs that were existing at the time had rates that were, as you can see there, anywhere from two to fourteen percent below PG&E. And that's just the generation rate, that's not the delivery charges, which I'll get into. So these programs have been, for the most part, very, very rate competitive and have been saving customers millions of dollars thus far. Now, this is not guaranteed into the future, but for the most part, these programs have been very successful in terms of saving. been very successful in terms of saving customers' money. The other thing that I want to highlight there is that all three programs have a baseline default renewable energy content that is currently higher than PG&E. So, you can see there that Marin Clean Energy is at 56%. I'm sorry, Sonoma and Lancaster are at about 30%, more, up to 36%. PG&E is now somewhere between 27% and 30%. The other thing I want to highlight is that all three programs have an option where people can automatically pay a premium to get 100% of their demand met through renewable resources. So, the idea is, for those who want to pay a little more money, they have the option to go 100% renewable. I should add that PG&E recently started a similar program, but these programs, for Marin, that 100% program's been around since it started in 2010. A question we get a lot is, how are, these are public agencies, how are they doing financially? How, if their rates are so much lower, how are they managing their books? And you can see there that the vast majority of the expenses, the revenue and expenses from a CCE program have to do with the buying and selling of electricity. That's no surprise. The administrative costs, the other costs are pretty minimal. But the key point in this slide that I want to highlight is that both Marin and Sonoma have been cash-positive, have been building and accumulating reserves every year. This is, those are the numbers there for fiscal, these are projected for fiscal '15 and '16. And so, they've been, these programs have been able to generate a reserve fund. The choices about how to invest that or not invest those funds are made up by the Board of Directors of both programs, which, like Alameda, when Alameda launches, are governed by a Joint Powers Agency. And there you go. So, there's, so I mentioned the JPA. So, with JPAs, as you know, every member jurisdiction has a seat at the table. They have the ability to decide where surplus revenues are spent, what the rates actually are. These are decisions that currently, without a CCE program, no one really has the ability to do. It's all handled by PG&E. Just the other key points I want to highlight in this slide, and it's important that people understand that Community Choice is an opt-out program. That means, under state law, if, let's say, the City of Livermore were to join the County of Alameda in starting a CCE program, that all of the homes and businesses in Livermore would be automatically enrolled into the program unless customers choose to opt out and go back to PG&E, which they can do at any time. So, what happens essentially is that the default energy provider switches from PG&E to the Community Choice Program, and that is a provision, as I said, that was, that's under state law, and there's, that's no real option around that. The opt-out rates tend to be sort of the 10% to 15% range. So, there are a number of people that choose to stay with PG&E, and that, of course, is their option. All the low-income, medical baseline, those types of programs that are available to PG&E customers would continue to be available to CCE customers. And the, I think it's actually on the next slide, yes. So, and you still continue to get a PG&E bill. In fact, your bill looks really no different. The only line item that's really different is the, as you can see there, this is a sample MCE bill, you can see there, MCE electricity generation charges. If you look at your bill, it's separated into two parts. The delivery portion, that's the part that PG&E handles now and will continue to handle. And then below that is the, would be the name of the CCE program, East Bay Community Energy. So, again, the bills will look the same. If one chooses to go to the 100% level, you can see there, that's the inset, that customer which pays for the 100% renewable called deep green is, they pay about a penny more per kilowatt hour. Again, that would only be for those who select that option. So, we get a lot of questions about environmental performance, and particularly from city governments, many of whom have climate action plans. And I just want to highlight here, the, this is an excerpt from the City of San Mateo, which is joining the County of San Mateo in launching Peninsula Clean Energy. And their climate action plan looked at the range of different options that could be undertaken by the city, from energy efficiency to alternative transportation, to look at ways to reduce emissions that are generated by the city or by residents. And as you can see there, the examination or the potential for Community Choice Energy, that's the bottom bar, to generate emission reductions in the city are disproportionately bigger than the rest of the bars. And that's because although electricity, emissions from electricity don't take place within the city, boundaries usually, that the consumption of that electricity by citizens does, of course, generate those emissions and therefore is usually incorporated into climate action plans. So, again, you can look there, you can see, Community Choice Energy does have a really significant impact on the ability for cities to meet climate action goals. So, on this slide, I just want to highlight, just to keep the presentation going here, two key risks that I put in, or risks that I put in two key buckets. Number one is market competition. Now, there is no guarantee that a Community Choice Program will always be lower than PG&E. And there have been points in time when, for example, MCE's rates have been slightly higher. So, if you have higher rates, then you have the potential for having higher opt-outs. That's the second bullet there. So, that's one set of risks that I think generally the Community Choice Programs have been able to manage through, you know, a well-designed portfolio of contracts. The second risk, which is a little bit harder to control, are continual efforts, both at the legislative level and at the regulatory level, at the PUC, to make it less competitive or make it more difficult for the Community Choice Programs to compete. And I can get into some examples of that, but suffice to say that a number of those efforts have been beaten back, and the, with an increasing number of Community Choice Programs that are out there, there have been an increasing size in the constituency that has been able to lobby and to, as I said, beat back some of these policies and regulations that have been proposed. So, where we are right now with the tech study, I just, the key point in this slide is that, you know, the tech study is sizing the program, it's determining if it can be cost-competitive with PG&E and all of that. Very typical with a lot of other tech studies that have been done. Alameda's is a little bit unique in the sense that it's looking heavily at the potential for energy efficiency, and I think there's, among a lot of the stakeholders, is a real interest to having a very aggressive energy efficiency program run by the Community Choice Program. And there's a really strong interest in having as much of the power generated locally as possible. So, an aggressive program to build local solar, local wind, thus creating local jobs. And the technical study did look at the number of jobs, the economic, direct and indirect economic impacts that would be generated by a Community Choice Program. It's important to note that Alameda County would actually be by far the largest Community Choice Program so far that's been developed. So, you have here almost 600,000 accounts in Alameda, or about 6,500 or 6.5 million megawatt hours of sales. That's almost twice as big as any other program. So, it's going to be an important entrance into the market once it launches next spring. Yeah, I'll just kind of run through this slide. You can just see here how, you know, Oakland, Fremont, Hayward, Berkeley, they're the big cities, they're the big loads, that's not surprising. Livermore is about 6%. It's more for your interest there. And the tech study also revealed that, and this is not too different from a lot of other communities, about 1/3 residential, 1/3 large commercial industrial, and 1/3 small, medium commercial. That's the load profile. It is actually a bit different than, let's say, Marin and Sonoma, that are much more rural and agricultural. But Alameda would be unique in the sense that it would have a lot of industry included into the program. So, where we are right now, our goal is to launch East Bay Community Energy next spring. And to work, to get this done, we're working on two parallel paths. One is the development of the Joint Powers Authority Agreement. That, I know we've engaged virtually all of the city attorneys, and they've been very participatory in the process, which has been great. And then the, and the second track is, again, the sort of the development with the tech study, the evaluation and the, you know, giving stakeholders and decision-makers the information they need to decide whether this is what they want to do. And we're hoping, this is our tentative deadline, is to ask the cities to decide whether or not they're going to join by the end of October of this year. So, this is, we're not asking anything for tonight. What we're hoping to do is come back to you in maybe a month or two, once we've really digested and processed the findings of the technical study, give you another update, and be here as a resource to answer any questions you might have, to help you decide whether you think this is going to be right for Livermore. And we are also having a pretty robust, and developing a robust multilingual public outreach effort, which will, again, help educate the public about the decision that's going to be made here. So, yeah, I think I've covered this slide pretty well. I think, yeah, so again, we're here for, to brief your staff, to answer any questions you may have, to encourage and receive feedback from your city attorney, to participate in all the JPA discussions, and I think I've covered that slide pretty well. So, that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions at this point? Okay, yes, I do. Couple of questions here. First off, are the delivery charges the same regardless of provider?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the same amount, whether it's PG&E providing the service or the CCA?
Yeah, so the PG&E still provides the delivery service, regardless of whether the customer is a CCE customer or a PG&E customer, so that, yeah.
So, what happens with folks that have already installed solar panels? Either whether they're leasing them or whether they actually purchased them outright?
So, the only way that the utilities are really involved in, when it comes to rooftop solar, is the amount that customers get paid if they overproduce, either overproduce during the day or, you know, for a year. And the other Community Choice Programs, it would not surprise me if Alameda did the same thing, actually offer a more generous rate. It's called net metering. They offer a more generous net metering rate than PG&E currently offers. And that's done on purpose because it encourages the public policy goal of having more customers put rooftop solar or to expand it more than they might otherwise have done. So, the, all rate decisions, of course, will be made and approved by the JPA Board, but if passed as prologue, I'm sure, I would suspect that Alameda would offer better net metering tariffs than is currently available. So, the only change there would be that customers would get more benefit from having rooftop solar.
Okay. And you said there's an opt-out fee, so everybody's automatically enrolled in the CCA. What is the opt-out? So, I presume if somebody from day one doesn't want to be part of the CCA and they choose to opt out, what is the opt-out fee?
So, there is no fee to opt out within the first 60 days.
Okay.
Now, after 60 days, again, it is up to the JPA Board to decide what fees may be imposed on customers that opt out after that initial enrollment, disenrollment window. And I can tell you just what other JPAs have done. So, Marin, for example, Marin Clean Energy, they charge $5 to opt out for a residential customer.
Okay.
You know, again, it may be zero, it may be five, that'll be decided by the JPA Board.
Okay, but it's a nominal, it's not based on a percentage of how much you're using?
No.
Okay. Because we have a very large power user here in Livermore. It's Lawrence National Laboratory, and they actually get their power from Washington.
Yeah.
So, I just didn't know how they would factor into this whole mix.
Well, there are some customers, and that facility may be one of them, that actually contract directly with the wholesale market. They are called what's called direct access customers.
Right, they are.
In which case, they would not choose, they would not be enrolled into the CCA program unless they essentially opted in, because they may have their own wholesale contract that they have to abide by. So, there are some industrial customers that have direct access and some don't.
So, they wouldn't have to opt in or out?
Yeah, they would continue, it's almost like they wouldn't participate in the CCA program at all.
Okay.
Actually, I have a clarification on that one as well, because I've already talked to the lab informally about that, and they do contract for a majority of their power use. They have to have a reliable source, you know, when they're the supercomputer and other spikes, and they, you know, we certainly don't want them browning out the entire PG&E system when they do whatever experiment. But they have a significant portion of the lab that is regular PG&E for office buildings and those uses. So, they could definitely potentially be a part of this for that segment, but then we'd also have to go through the Department of Energy for that decision process, so it might be a little complicated to get them to switch over.
What astounds me is that Sequoia, their computer, uses more energy than the entire city of Livermore combined.
Oh, yeah.
It's a beast. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I have a card here, Eloise Hayman.
Let me just say that I want to encourage Livermore to join. I've been a political activist, and I made the mistake of working at the federal level, thinking that Congress was the way to go to solve today's problems. And I was enlightened a couple of years ago when I heard about a book called The Metropolitan Revolution. And in the absence of Congress and even sometimes the state solving problems, I understood it was the local level in conjunction with academic and business leaders that were solving today's problems. And in fact, I think, especially in Alameda, let's take advantage of the energy that's in our backyards. The transmission costs to the customer are less. It will save us in the long run. Renewable energy is the future, whether Congress recognizes it or not. And so, I'm so pleased that this is being considered here. And if I'm not out of line, because I'm going to change topic, I'm very impressed with your efforts with respect to the homeless population. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, that's the last card that I've got. So, this is just an information item. Any more comments that you wish to?
Sure. I didn't have any questions, because I've already cornered staff and the consultants on multiple occasions during the steering committee meetings, but I wanted to thank, first of all, the Board of Supervisors for initiating this and fronting the costs for the initial study.
Thank you, Scouts.
In particular, Supervisor Hagerty for spearheading the effort, and also county staff, because I know that they have limited resources, and what is it, 38 or 39 people on the committee? I think it's...
39 members, including the chair.
39 members, including the chair, with a lot of alternates. So, wrangling that group sometimes is, as Eloise knows, sometimes it's challenging when you ask for questions and about 20 hands go up, and it's not just one question from one person, it's about, oh, three or four from each person. It gets a little cumbersome, but that's good, because all of my concerns and questions about it have been thoroughly addressed. I know it sounds kind of like a radical idea, but as, you know, local municipalities are comfortable with, when somebody else has implemented it first and they've shown a successful way of implementing a system, that it's easier for us to follow. And what I'm really encouraged about this particular program is it's a good example of getting back some local control. I would much rather have a board, you know, that reports to residents than shareholders. So, if everything goes as planned and if everything is still staying the course, I think it's a very hopeful and very positive direction that we're going in. Also, I'd like to point out that, you know, the revenues that you're seeing in the reserves, now we have a choice as to what to do with those reserves and revenues. Do we build up reserves eventually to potentially, you know, flatline the costs during the time when the energy spikes? Do we invest it in local programs, like what you were talking about earlier, potentially paying more for solar with residents, or, you know, offering more for energy-efficient appliances? So, if you buy something that's above code, you might be able to get a bigger rebate. So, local control and having a choice with our energy sources and giving residents the choice if they wish to pay more to go 100% green, I think it's a very positive goal. And I also am encouraged by, with the speed, that usually local government doesn't work this fast. And right now, the county and the group, we're really pushing an aggressive schedule to get this up and running. So, things are going well, and I hope they continue to go well, and I'm very interested to see the final report. And I'm very interested to see the final report from MRW. We had a great presentation the other night on kind of an overview of what they're seeing, and it was all encouraging. And I also want to point out that I think currently in the JPA, there's a section where, what is it, 15 days prior to going live, was it? Or 15 days prior to the JPA being finalized? We're going to get another snapshot of what the costs really are, and that will give cities the chance to pull out at that point if it's way off base. So we have kind of that secondary parachute ripcord to pull, just in case things aren't moving in the direction that we like. So all of the items on the list of local government concerns are being checked off and being addressed. So I'm very pleased to see that direction.
Okay. I remember there was another previous proposal that was talking about saving money, and there was a great deal of enthusiasm behind this. It was going to lower rates, and we had the opportunity to purchase from an independent system operator that would allow us to purchase from the cheapest sources. And that was Raptor and Enron. And that really sort of blew up in everybody's face. And there was a, sorry, call it last count, it was $34 billion deficit from the state because of these wonderful business practices like Death Star and a few other things. So this is a very complex industry. What happens if all of a sudden the rates aren't as low as people might hope? And suppose everybody decides to drop the five bucks and opt out? What happens to the CCA collection then?
Well, if that happened, then the CCA could wind down and everyone is switched back to PG&E. And in fact, actually, the CCA is required to post a bond that would pay for the costs of switching everyone back to PG&E if that became necessary.
Okay.
Now, if that happened, and the other question we get, which I know you haven't asked it, but it's where the next logical, where you go logically, is, you know, is there any risk to the JPA member? So let's just say everyone opts out and the program winds down, but yet you have all these power contracts. Well, the, it's pretty well codified in JPA law and certainly in all the power supply contracts that the JPAs sign with power providers, that that risk is on them. So if the CCA disappears, they can't really go after the cities. That's certainly something carefully thought out.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to the second round of...
We'll be back.
...information. Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to 6.03, participation in the Energy Council. Ms. Aronson?
Hi again. So Item 6.03 requests that the City Council consider membership in the Energy Council. The Energy Council is a joint powers agency that was formed in 2013 to seek regional funding, opportunities to develop and implement programs and policies that reduce energy demand, increase energy efficiency, and advance the use of clean, efficient, and renewable resources. Stop Waste serves as staff to the Energy Council, as well as to the Alameda County Waste Management Authority Board and to the Source Reduction and Recycling Board. Through funding awarded to the Energy, or through funding awarded to the Energy Council, Stop Waste staff are available to provide technical expertise to assist in implementing local sustainable energy strategies and address climate change readiness initiatives. Since its inception, the Energy Council has been awarded over $24 million in external funding to manage energy efficiency programs. In order to join the Energy Council, the Livermore City Council would need to adopt a resolution requesting membership, and the Energy Council would need to approve Livermore's request to participate. Staff recommends that the City Council approve a resolution indicating interest in joining the Energy Council and requesting to become a signatory to the Energy Council Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement. Thank you for your consideration, and both Stop Waste and Livermore staff are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Sure, just a quick question. No cost impacts, but it said in the staff report, except for staff time. So what are we looking at? Is it, you know, are we playing, let's see how far we can push Judy before she cracks? Or, yeah, oh, city manager's nodding his head, so, okay. Standard procedure for all staff. So, I mean, is it, is it a lot of commitment? Is it...
There's a two-hour staff meeting each month that I can participate via phone call. And then the Waste Management Authority Board members are the same as the Energy Council Board members, so I'm, you know, oftentimes attending that meeting.
Changing hats at the same meeting.
Correct. And I think that would be the same for Councilmember Turner or whoever the representative was.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Questions? Okay. So it's not going to cost us anything other than staff time. Okay. And this is independent of the CCA that we just heard about. That's a different JPA.
Two different things. This is meant to focus on grant funding.
Okay, very good. All right, do I have a motion?
I can make a comment real quick. Initially, my advice to the council was to hold off on the Energy Council because we had some concerns from a city staff perspective on mission creep and a couple of other things. And now, since they've been in place, they've done a really good job. And they've done a really good job at looking at leveraging the region for obtaining grant funding. And I'm very pleased to see what I've seen. And so I absolutely would be happy to make a motion to support staff's recommendation.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Turner, seconded by Councilmember Spodowski. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Hi.
It passed unanimously. Thank you very much.
Free to go.
No, not quite yet.
I don't know when you know.
All right. Bear with me for just a moment here. Okay, we're on to committee reports. Councilmember Spodowski?
Great, thank you. I have a few items to report. On April 29th, I went to Fire Station Number Nine dedication, the ceremony. That was great. It's a great station. It was, I saw it on the Planning Commission, so it's great to see it finally, finally built with some really cool doors. Go by and check out the doors and the artwork on the side of the building. It's a really nice facility and well-deserved after what they've been through with the different fire stations and the moves. On May 2nd, I was at the Livermore Amador Valley Transit Authority Comprehensive Operations Analysis Public Hearing. That was at the Bankhead Theater. If you recall, on May 2nd, there was an accident on 580 shutting down all but one lane. So I'd like to thank, there was about 40, 45 residents in attendance. It took about an hour and a half for me to get from San Armon to the meeting. So there was a lot of traffic and a lot of people fought through that traffic to be there at the public hearing to talk about the significant changes. So I just wanted to thank everybody that showed up, and I'm excited to have those changes go through. Somebody from, who works in San Armon and lives in Tracy, said it took them three and a half hours to get home that night. And she was literally shaking when she got out of her car because it was like so stressful and just, yeah, it wasn't a good day. May 4th, I attended the Altamont Regional Rail Working Group. It's a bit of a tongue twister for me this evening, it appears. That's the group. We're looking at ways to accelerate and encourage BART to build out to the Isabel Point, that lengthy four-mile section, which seems to become more and more complicated to build. We're looking at ways to speed that up and actually get something built sooner. And that evening, I attended the Community Choice Energy Work Group, which you heard enough about tonight, so I won't go on with that. And then on May 5th, we had advisory panel interviews, and it was a great group of applicants. And anybody who is interested in serving on a city committee, please check the postings on Nextdoor and also on our website when we have openings. But the other week, we had some great people step forward and serve on the committees. Other than that, I have no matters initiated, and that's the end of my report.
Okay, Councilmember Turner?
I'm looking at, too late for you, too late. Guess I'll just get her done. Okay, I just have a couple of things, if I can get my voice back. Some of them quite old because I wasn't here last time. But I'm sure you brought this up, and I'll bring it up once again. On April 14th, I attended the dedication of the bandstand in Carnegie Park that was donated by the, our Rotary Clubs here in town. If you haven't seen it, go look at it. It's a work of art. It's fabulous. What a testament to the fundraising capability of our clubs here in town and all the volunteers that put it together. And apparently, the mayor's propensity to bring donuts on workdays. So if he needs a project, he's quite the donut delivery guy here. So, well done. And just kind of neat to see that project. So if you haven't seen it, go take a look. On April 28th, I attended the League of California Cities Events at the Bocce, at Campo de Bocce, and just wanted to, again, publicly thank Concanon, Guerre, and Crooked Vine for donating wine to the event, which it was able to allow us to do more with that event. That was very nice of them. And Livermore came in second. Not so bad. Well done. And then lastly, again, on May 2nd, attended the Livermore Amador Valley Transit Authority Meeting at the Bankhead Theater with Councilmember Spodowski, who came up with a fantastic idea on that night to potentially, there's, with the comprehensive plan that we have in place, there's quite a few people that are coming in, especially summer workers for the laboratories that are concerned about the removal of one of the bus lines that they use to get to work. So Councilmember Spodowski came up with a great idea to leverage that with another line so that we could perhaps make more people happy and be able to keep that, along with our express bus that's going to go from the transit center direct to BART, and which will, I'm sure, impact parking. Sorry, but we'll get more cars off the freeway. So it was a great night. And again, I cannot believe how many people came out with the traffic. We had board members come an hour late because the traffic was so bad, and we still had community members coming in. And so a lot of commitment, a ton of people that are very excited about the new bus stop in Pleasanton, serving the Heritage, not Heritage...
It's the Stone Ridge Creek.
The Stone Ridge Creek, yeah. So we had, a bunch of their residents came out in support of that. They're very happy about their new access to public transit. And that, I have nothing to initiate either, so that's all I got.
Very good. Okay, on the 28th of April, I attended an ACTC Board Meeting where we received community reports from the advisory committees. We're also looking for someone from Livermore to be part of the Para-Transit Advisory and Planning Committees. If anybody would like to participate in that, contact the City Clerk's Office. The 29th, again, the Station Nine dedication and the artwork with Lynn Owens, the caretaker of the light bulb. And it's shown, he's shown in the artwork, pointing to the light bulb as an iconic photograph of that. On April 30th, I spoke at a Rotary Conference about the partnerships that we've been able to build throughout the community with Rotary. And we had mention of the bandstand. And there were a number of folks, I think 40 people that were not Rotary members, that donated to that. So it really was a community effort. May 2nd, there was a special Lavma meeting to award the contract for the replacement of a bunch of defective cables that we had. May 3rd, I attended the first graduating class of veterans who had interned at Lawrence Rivermore National Laboratory, a very exciting program. And they just enrolled the next cohort. It's a two-year program. And the laboratory is going to be hiring about 200 to 600 technicians over the next few years. So it's a very important program to put our veterans back to work. May 4th, there was the Altamont Regional Rail Working Group, as was mentioned by Councilmember Spodowski. There were a couple of really amazing pieces of information that came out of this. There was a transit line built in Arcadia to Pasadena. It's a 24-mile line that was built for $1 billion. And there was a discussion about the line from Bakersfield to San Jose, the high-speed rail line, 200 miles of high-speed rail line, and they're proposing to deliver that by 2025. We are proposing to deliver BART to Livermore at grade along the freeway, five miles, by 2025. So there's something wrong here. And this is why we've formed the JPA, is to hopefully get this project moving a little more quickly. That night, I was at an LCAC, Meatlander Cultural Arts Council, with information about the upcoming Measure J Bond. May 5th, we had interviews for the History Guild, or History Committee, the Art Commission, and Beautification Committees. May 6th was the Cal LaFco State Board Meeting, where we reviewed legislation, curiously enough, that seeks to undermine LaFco authority. There are several bills right now looking to circumvent LaFco, but we're there to ensure efficient government and preservation of open space and ag lands. Today, I was at the ACTC I-580 Committee. Over 550,000 express lane and HOV trips have been made in the month of March. 211,000 westbound, 338 eastbound. The total range is between 3 and 1/4 and 650 for the trip. The Planning Policy Land Ledge Committee, we had a performance report. Curiously enough, the number of carpoolers between 2005 and 2014 dropped over 4,000 carpoolers. So I'm not really sure what that means. We also reviewed the arterial plan, the draft countywide transit plan, and the Free Transit Pass Pilot Program. And that's going to be part of Livermore High School and East Avenue Middle School. So if we look for that. Finally, matters initiated. I've heard some complaints about some rowdy activity, some of the benches in the downtown, and possibly seeing how we can best handle that, so we're, collections of some rowdy folks, and how we can address the, some of the complaints we've heard from the downtown businesses. And finally, just back to Item 4.02, since we were talking about water earlier, we did amend the water conservation measures. So for those folks that didn't read the packet, you can now water three times a week. And water between the hours of 6:00 in the evening and 9:00 the following morning. So we've loosened up the restrictions a little bit, so look for that. Yeah, the odds and evens, we don't need to worry about that. With that, remember that the next meeting of the City Council is going to be May 23rd at the Shrine Event Center, 170 Lindbergh Avenue, 7 o'clock. We will see you there. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.